Hello and welcome to the City of Cedar Falls Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting for Wednesday, August 27th of 2025. I call this meeting to order. Could I get a roll call, please?
Alberhaskey.
Here.
Gribovich.
Here.
Hartley.
Here.
Henderson.
Here.
Moser, here. Sorensen.
Here.
Stahlnecker.
Watkins.
Here.
Okay, we have two absent tonight.
All right, thank you. First agenda item tonight is approval of minutes. Looking for a motion or any discussion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. This is time of the meeting for any public comment for anything that's not on the agenda. All right, I'll bring it back to old business. Our first item in old business is consideration of the Cedar Falls Park Master Plan, and I'm just gonna hand it right over to Michelle right now.
Thank you. We do have Jody Rader from HKGI available for questions, and I'm going to give the PowerPoint. So we're finally here for the final, our final meeting for the Parks Master Plan, and since we met, there's been a lot of public participation for people to provide comments on the draft. And we had a focus group the day of our last meet, our meeting in July 9th, and the draft went out to the public review on the 10th. We had an open house at City Hall in July, and then a pop-up event at the Parks, or I'm sorry, the Farmer's Market. In July and August, staff went out to talk to different groups, including the College Hill Partnership, North Cedar Neighborhood Association, Kiwanah Club Rotary, and the Community Main Street. When we had the open house, we had 27 attending, and we heard from, we had 62 comments to go through. And comments included the soft trails, trail connections overall, adding winter activities, trash recycling benches, concerns for tobacco vaping in the parks, adding a splash pad, having accessibility, fitness equipment, having bird cell renovation as a priority, and having the state park as a priority. And when I go through some of the slides, I'm gonna leave out the repeat ones. At the Farmer's Market, we also heard about having more boat and kayak launches, and expanding the rec center, having natural play features, art along trails, accessible play features, and concerns for herbicides and pesticides in the parks. We had over 2,000 people visit the site, and 63 comments were provided on that website, including adding intergenerational programming, educational elements, shade trees, public-private partnerships, considering for natural versus synthetic turf, protected bike lanes, adding tennis, pickleball, volleyball, and fitness equipment, and we've already said that. So how did this all get put together? Since we've, since you've seen the plan presented to you, we added a cover letter, table of contents, and acknowledgements. We also reviewed the plan for compliance to the state law for 856, and we find, we added a statement that the plan meets the intent of the bill, and when we refer to inclusion play, it's more of the ability of the users. We also updated maps and tables to clarify the Gateway Park versus Gateway Park, I'm sorry, Gateway River Park, and noted that the city council approved nine point, sorry, 8.9 million for a pool renovation project in 2024. An ease assessment, we added more emphasis to intergenerational programs and the trends, and adding a reference to the North Cedar Falls Parks and Maintenance Plan, and the Iowa State University Student Concept Work that was presented to the city, and adding trends what to do with the floodplain. We added, making sure all the events that we had talked about, that we were participating in, got into the plan. And in the vision and goals into the neighborhood parks and play areas, we added language about highlighting unique themes in each of the neighborhoods, and not having each park look the same, adding ideas for future equipment, including fitness circuit equipment, small splash pad or natural water features, and yard games such as corn throwing, and along with natural-based play and structured and creative play. And then on the, continuing on that chapter, and athletics facilities, added continued evaluation feasibility for future refrigerator or synthetic ice rings to support ice skating and hockey. And the vision for recreational trails, adding explore year-round trail use and expansion of soft surface trails to provide opportunities for snow shoeing, cross-country skiing, mountain biking, running, and hiking. The vision and goals for recreation and programming, we also added seek ways to provide low-cost equipment, yard games, and highlight programs. Examples of this include temporary volleyball nets, shuffleboard, or cornhole boards. Under operation maintenance and staffing, there was a new objective, adding trees and shrubs and native plants throughout parks and open spaces, adding shade trees to playgrounds near sitting areas, removing invasive species where necessary, and then continue to reduce herbicide and pesticides in the park, as listed in the herbicide and pesticide reduction plan that the city already has. Under the vision still, we're looking at access signage and communication, and adding a new objective, post-information where applicable to support healthy and active living, including information about tobacco and vape use and proper disposal in parks. And there is also addition to the partnerships funding and stewardship, adding potential roles for future conservation or friends group, Friends of the Cedar Falls Parks, and trying to encourage that to happen, and adding partners with vendors and businesses, adding emphasis to partners with schools and school programming, and then adding another objective, seven, to create and evaluate and leverage user fees and rental income to support projects. In Chapter 5, the big idea to complete the recreation trail network, the addition was to add wording to clarify that future trail alignments that shown in the plan that are different from the 2022 bicycle and pedestrian plan will require further study and evaluation. And then under the big idea skate and active sports parks, they were wanting to add potential features to include amenities for various ages and abilities, and add potential features to include integration of public art and local artists. Tourism designation assessment, which is a sidebar, the city is working with another consultant to do a tourism designation assessment, and adding the idea for a future facility to consider site design with shade trees, additional storage buildings, and adequate spacing between fields. The big idea Cedar River Water Recreation Complex has changed to a network, because complex could be considered a building, and we didn't want to confuse that. And then adding improvement launches, locations to potential components, and evaluation of a phase two of the Gateway River Master Plan, and improvements at the Island Park to potential components, and added integration of educational interpretative signage and outdoor classroom areas to potential components. Under neighborhood parks and playground improvements, there are two parks missing, so we added those Fairway Cemetery Tot Lot and the Sorry Memorial Park to those lists of playgrounds that need to be replaced. And Police Officers Park, there is a concept of removing the playground equipment and adding alternative features such as a dog park or multi-use fields, and making sure the permits are obtained as required. Under future park areas, we would like to see looped walking paths within parks and connections to city trail network was added to the list of features to be considered for a future park, and adding sage, shade structures and shade trees to consider for future park development as well. And then, as mentioned earlier, adding yard games to be considered as future park development. And then the draft includes a new chapter, the implementation. And I'll just go right into it. The implementation is looking at projects, phasing costs, as listed in Chapter 5, and outlining the different timeframe for it as ongoing near midterm or long term, and looking at anticipated cost ranges. The same happened, the same also was proposed for all the neighborhood park and playground improvements, and the other park improvements that are listed in different parts of the And then the plan also looks at how to keep operation and maintenance, because as we grow, it's really important that our operation and maintenance match what we have, or do better than we have today. And then we also kept a thought of, as we are expanding and adding new parks, how will that also increase the funding that's needed? And then one of the, one of the implementation strategies is recommending having the community be part of the design and engagement throughout the process, for the neighborhood will be happy with what they're going to be next to. And we also did a section about the park dedication ordinance, and looking at recommendations of what that would look like, and that also includes a neighborhood park district map. And this, this plan is meant to be something that doesn't just sit on the shelf, but looks at being looked at every year, every two years, and every five years, and evaluation of looking, making sure we're updating our costs, and updating the list to complete, but every two years having another survey, and then having staff review the plan. And then every five years, it really should be a comprehensive update, and that way, things, as things grow, or things come about that we didn't think of, we can incorporate those as we grow. And then we end with the funding opportunities of grants, and how we could partner with others, and just our general funds. So that was a lot of what we had updated, and again, I do have Jody on the line if you have any questions, but I also am available for questions.
All right, thank you. Anyone have questions for staff?
Not a question, but I just want to say thank you. This is, this has been a tremendous undertaking. It's so much work to put this together, and as someone who personally and my family are frequent and heavy users of parks and trails, they are truly a gem in our community. They make our community a beautiful, livable place, and being able to pause and assess where we're at and where we're going, and very thoroughly examine as to what are the strengths, what are the weaknesses, what will it cost. I just, I applaud you for all the work that went into this, and thank you for taking that on, and really look forward to a year from now coming back and seeing where we're at, and how are we moving towards the goals. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to this? All right, I'll bring it back to commission. I was involved in the steering committee here. It was an interesting process. I was amazed at just how much positive impact parks have on the community and how important they are, and I like the fact that, you know, we're focused on trying to improve that and bring more value to the community. So it's a good program. Did we want Jody to speak, or are we just gonna, are we looking for?
She's just available for questions, so.
Are we just looking for a motion to move this along?
I will make a motion to approve the Cedar Falls Park Master Plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Otherwise, roll call vote, please.
Okay. Alberhaskey.
Aye.
Gribovich.
Aye.
Hartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Sorensen.
Aye.
Watkins.
Aye.
Okay. I believe the Parks and Rec Commission is meeting about this as well, and then the next steps, Michelle?
Yes, so the Parks and Rec Commission's having a special meeting tomorrow, and they'll make their recommendation. And then September 2nd, Jody will be in here in person, making a presentation to the council of the whole. And then we expect, we're anticipating that September 15th, the city council will make their decision on the Parks Master Plan.
Okay, thank you. Now to move on to the third agenda item tonight, it's a zoning code text amendment, parking requirements for studio and one-bedroom apartments. And Mr. Seavey has that tonight.
Yes, thank you. A little bit of this will be a review from last time. The city received an application requesting a text amendment to the zoning code to change the parking requirement for studio apartments in multi-unit developments from two parking spaces per unit to one parking space per unit. The current code can cause some mismatches in parking. For example, code currently requires more parking for studios and one-bedroom apartments on a per-bedroom basis than most single-family houses. Providing more parking than is necessary represents a real cost to the end user, and demographics show a projected increase in one-person households which will not need the accommodation of two parking spaces. The primary advantage to developers and landlords is a lower cost to build these units. Ultimately, a change to the requirement will promote housing affordability, encourage sustainable living, be proportionally fair to users of smaller units and spaces, adapt to demographic and lifestyle changes, promote efficient land use, and support urban density and walkability. At the August 13th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission requested that staff bring forward further analysis of what other cities require for parking. From an analysis of parking requirements for multifamily dwellings for cities in Iowa with population of more than 20,000, here are some facts worth considering, and you'll see a graphic up on the screen. The City of Cedar Falls currently has the highest parking requirement for multifamily at two per unit plus one for each bedroom in excess of two, in excess of two bedrooms, plus one additional stall for every five units in excess of five units for visitor Waterloo has the second highest parking requirement for studios and one-bedroom units at two per unit. For all other cities, assuming no studio apartment is more than 800 square feet, 1.5 spaces is the highest parking requirement outside of Cedar Falls and Waterloo. And almost half of those cities require just one per unit for studios and one bedrooms. There's also, and you'll see this from the graphic up on the screen, there's no apparent correlation between city size and lower parking requirements. So, and you can see how this graphic shows Cedar Falls and Waterloo as kind of outliers at present. The requirement of one parking space per studio apartment is very common regardless of population. Additionally, two cities of interest in this analysis are Waukees and Urbandale, as both are closer to the size of Cedar Falls, 34,000 in Waukees and 47,000 or 48,000 in Urbandale, Both require one parking space per bedroom similar to what the applicant is proposing. Staff reached out to both to discuss when their parking requirement was adopted and how it has gone since adoption. Urbandale's was adopted in the end of 2024, and just a side note, their analysis supported a cap of 2.25 per unit, so there's not a ever-increasing with the number of bedrooms standard there, just cap at 2.25. Nothing has been built or approved as of yet under that, Urbandale's new requirement. However, Waukees requirement was a little bit more interesting. It was adopted more than six years ago, and they have seen a sizable amount of multifamily housing built since the change to their code. There have been zero reported parking issues or complaints about parking from citizens and neighborhoods where developments have been built. Both cities also report that developers rarely build the minimum, but will usually build higher than the minimum. Not necessarily, you know, significantly higher, but it essentially shows that they build to their market. They understand what, what their tenants need, and they're gonna build to that based on what the demand in the market is. So, for some context about, about the effect this change could have in Cedar Falls, the most recently approved multifamily development is Cedar West Apartments on the southeast corner of Green Hill Road and Cedar Heights Drive, approved in February this year. It is a 195-unit development with a total of 315 bedrooms. The approved plans show a mix of studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom units. Our current parking requirement calculates to 428 parking spaces, so there are 113 parking spaces more than there are bedrooms. The proposed change would reduce the parking requirement to 353 parking spaces, based on the mix of apartment types. That is still a high number compared to what most other cities require, but it is a significant improvement equating to 18,000 less square feet of pavement needed on that site. I should mention, this analysis by no means is meant to be conclusive about whether overall parking requirements for multifamily residential developments are appropriate. More work is needed to make sure that we are not over-parking residential development sites. This analysis merely illustrates that the singular change to reduce parking requirement, the parking requirement for studios and one-bedrooms to one per bedroom, is reasonable for us to take action on today. It will create a level playing field for developers seeking to build smaller, more affordable apartments, which ultimately that cost can be passed on to the end user. So the actual changes provided in your packet might seem like a lot is happening as far as the proposal, but there are only three basic changes being proposed here. The first is the update of the requirement for multi-unit residential from two per unit to one per bedroom. The second is to match the naming and format conventions of our use categories. And the last, our minor edits to clean up the code. These are non-substantive changes such as changing parking stall to parking space. With that, staff recommends that the commission hold the public hearing, discuss and make a recommendation to the city council regarding this case, proposed change to the parking requirement for studio and one-bedroom apartments. And I should, should mention, the applicant is here if you have any questions on that front, and I turn the time back over to the commission.
All right, thank you. Is there any questions for staff?
I have, and I apologize if it's a silly question, but later today, we're going to be discussing accessory dwelling units. If someone has an accessory dwelling unit on their property, would that count towards the parking requirement?
No. We can talk about that later when we go over that case, but this, this is just for multi-unit developments, is what this applies to. This one applied to single-family or any other, any other building type, but multifamily.
Okay, thank you.
And I have a question. First of all, I appreciate the benchmarking that you did with other cities. That was really helpful. I just had a question about, you mentioned specifically that if it's studios, no more than 800 square feet. So did you see differences across those cities in terms of the size of the studio and then the parking requirements?
So, yeah, the only reason that caveat is in the staff report, and I mentioned it here, is because there were only, there were two cities, Bettendorf and Coralville, that made their parking requirement dependent on the size of the, of the unit versus number of bedrooms or other kinds of things. So that was the only thing I had to kind of give a caveat on to standardize the insights and statements that I was able to make on that analysis. If that makes sense?
That does.
800 square feet was the cutoff for, for both of those jurisdictions. 800 square feet was the cutoff for both of those jurisdictions, where they say, here's a lower requirement if it's under 800, here's a higher requirement if it's over 800. And that was it. It wasn't dependent, for neither of those jurisdictions, it wasn't dependent on the number of bedrooms. They just, square footage, that was it.
Okay, thank you.
For a dwelling that would require four spaces, that would be 4.8 by the calculation. What happens to that 0.8? Does that get rounded off or just dropped off?
Say that again, if there's...
So there is 0.2 additional units, or one unit, one parking space for every five units.
If we go back to the... There we go. So, you see the 2.2. So if it's a two-bedroom, it would also be 2.2. For a three-bedroom, it would be...
If we had six one-bedroom, or four one-bedroom dwellings, that would require four parking spaces, correct?
Correct, correct.
There would be no visitor, so Chris has calculated the visitor parking with this, which is a little confusing. So it's only for multifamily dwellings that have over five units that triggers the requirement for visitor parking. So if it's got less than five units, they don't have any visitor parking requirement. And then above that, it's one space for every five units. So you've just generalized and done the math to show this. So that's just the visitor parking adding into this.
So if it was nine one-bedroom units, it would be 10, or I felt like, I'm sorry. Would you need two, or what happens to the one?
It would be, it'd be one. It would round up to just one space for that extra four units.
So any decimal gets dropped off of that calculation?
Right. Yeah, we always round up when it comes to required parking.
All right. Would the petitioner like to speak to this? Okay. Is anyone from the public like to speak to this? All right, I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion or any motions.
I would say that we've seen definitely nationally that there's fewer people in each dwelling. So that's gone down from 2.4, in a lot of cases, less than two people per dwelling. So it's not uncommon that at least one bedroom are occupied by a single person, that they're not occupied by a couple. They can't be, but...
I personally love it. Less hard space, more green space. It just goes to me with the initiative that we're doing for more green space for the developers and the multifamily. So I would enter, I would make a motion to approve this text amendment.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Alberhaskey.
Aye.
Gribovich.
Aye.
Hartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Sorensen.
Aye.
Watkins.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries.
All right, well, thank you. The fourth agenda item tonight, zoning code text amendment, land use permits. And I believe Chris has this again.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, the land use permit requirement, again, this is going to be a review from last time, but it is, the requirement is insufficiently and inconsistently defined in the zoning ordinance. For some development activities that have defined standards, the zoning ordinance states clearly that a land use permit is required. There are other development activities, also for which standards are defined, where the zoning ordinance may only imply that a permit is required or expected without clearly stating it. This inconsistency led to a brief council discussion on September 16th, 2024. At least one citizen had expressed some frustration with the difficulty of finding the land use permit requirement in the code, and a lack of details surrounding that requirement, such as the application process, fees associated with the land use permits, and other things. As such, the staff is proposing a text amendment to better define the land use permit requirement, along with some associated details. Staff worked with the city attorney to determine the language for this code draft, and it is reflective of other permit requirements contained in the code of ordinances. In your packet is a draft of the code language. For brevity, I have a summary of proposed changes up on the screen, which I'll discuss. So, the first point is to add a section 26-26, application of provisions. So it's essentially a part of the beginning of the zoning ordinance that establishes the authority of the zoning ordinance. Basically states, "No land use shall be established, nor shall any structure be erected, constructed, installed, moved, converted, enlarged, reconstructed, or structurally altered except in conformity with the regulations and standards of this chapter." So we also are replacing section 26-29 occupancy permit with 26-29 land use permit. Occupancy permit is basically a building department or building code type of provision. And so it doesn't really belong in the zoning ordinance, and the provisions in that section actually are covered in other parts of the code. So replacing that made a lot of sense in that, in this new section, we're defining clearly the land use permit requirement as follows. "A land use permit must be obtained and the appropriate permit fee paid prior to engaging in the following activities impacted, impacting land use in the city." And then it defines, you know, each of those land use activities, and they're basically all the activities that we issue permits for already. So, we also define the basic method to obtain the land use permit. We define the permit fee, define the basic administrative expectation and procedure when a complete application is received by the city, and we define the appeal process. And with that, staff recommends that the commission hold a public hearing, discuss and make a recommendation to the city council about this amendment to the zoning code to clarify the land use permit requirement. With that, I turn it back.
All right, thank you. Is there any questions for staff?
Yeah, so this require like a land use permit to bring in a, like a shed on skids, for an example? Like a pre-bought?
Yes, yeah, that's, that is, that's actually already defined in the detached accessory structure code, but yes, that is...
I think that happens a lot, that doesn't, you know?
Yeah, there, yes, there are a few cases like that around the city that we've seen as well. But, but yes, they are required to pull a permit for that.
And the reason for that is that, I mean, the reason we have this permit requirement, I mean, the requirement's fairly low, you know, money-wise for people to apply for it. But the purpose of it is to make sure people don't make a big investment in something like a fence or something like that, and they don't realize that they have easement on their property, or something that somebody can say later, their neighbor can turn them in, the city and say, oh, they built the fence too tall, or it was on an easement, and then they have to go to the expense of moving it. So it's nice to have people come in, so we can help them figure out, you know, where things can be placed, and they're not over easements, and they're not, you know, too tall, or whatever it might be. It's really there for us to provide that guidance to people before they make that investment.
All right. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to comment on this? All right, I will bring it back to commission, looking for any further discussion or motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the zoning code text amendment.
Second.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Could I get a roll call vote, please?
Alberhaskey.
Aye.
Gribovich.
Aye.
Hartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Sorensen.
Aye.
Watkins.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. The fifth agenda item tonight, the zoning code text amendment, accessory dwelling units, which was previously discussed. So this goes back to Chris again. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, a lot of, a lot of text amendments here. On December 26th, 2024, council made a referral to revisit certain standards in the accessory dwelling unit ordinance adopted in November of 2024. Then on May 1st, Governor Reynolds signed a new state law, Senate File 592, into effect, requiring all jurisdictions to allow ADUs, and setting forth additional requirements or restrictions for how we can or cannot handle them in our local ordinance. Council's referral and the new state law were discussed at the May 19th Committee of the Whole Meeting. At that meeting, council directed staff to begin the process to make changes necessary to bring our ordinance in line with the new state law. So we can talk real quick about the new state law. The new state law requires jurisdictions to allow a minimum of one ADU on the same lot as a single-family residence, imposed on all cities across the state, and counties, in fact. This is, this is consistent, this requirement is consistent with how the ordinance is currently written. However, the authority of local jurisdictions is limited and requires some changes. For instance, jurisdictions cannot limit the size to less than 1,000 square feet, even where the principal dwelling is less than 1,000 square feet. Height setbacks, minimum lot sizes, et cetera, cannot be more restrictive than standards applying to the principal dwelling. For instance, the current height standard in most zones for single-family dwellings is 35 feet. So ADUs are allowed to be built to that same standard, technically. Jurisdictions cannot require materials and design to match the principal structure. No additional parking requirements are permitted. In other words, only the parking required for the principal dwelling may be required. Jurisdictions cannot limit the use of either the house or the ADU as a rental, so no owner occupancy requirement is allowed. Lastly, jurisdictions cannot regulate based on density standards, for instance, a limit to the number of total units per acre. Up on the screen is a summary of changes that staff is proposing at this time. So one is to delete the owner occupancy requirement, and others to increase the number of allowed bedrooms to two. Clarify the height requirement to be no taller than allowed for the principal structure as per the underlying zoning district. Delete design and material standards. Change the egress window requirement for basement units to be one per bedroom. Add the building addition as one of the forms that an ADU may take. Update utility access language to match the state ordinance. And similar updates to the downtown code provisions, just the same. Since clarification was requested in our last conversation, in orange up on the screen are the changes requested by council that are not necessarily required by state law. So the increase to the number of allowed bedrooms to two, that was a council request. And then change the egress window requirement for basement units to be one per bedroom. Instead of what we have currently in our code is to have two egress windows minimum in a unit, even if it's a one-bedroom unit, so. Let's see, staff also proposes to eliminate the eight-foot separation requirement between structures on a lot as defined in the detached accessory structure code. This provision has been a common point of contention when discussing with homeowners where they can place a shed or detached structure. Since the building code has standards for spacing between structures to meet fire code requirements, it has been confusing and unnecessary to include a different standard in the zoning ordinance for separation between accessory structures. So with that, staff recommends that the commission hold the public hearing, discuss and make a recommendation to the city council to this text amendment, an amendment to the standards applicable to accessory dwelling units. And with that, I turn it back to the commission.
Thank you. Is there any questions for staff?
What is the utility language? Is, like, after a certain size, does it need to be metered separately, or?
That's a good question. So it, we can't, it specifically says in the state code, we can't require separate utility lines if there's not a way to, unless there is, unless there's not a way to separate the metering. So there's a metering requirement on the state code as well, but it's essentially, if there's a way to to divide one utility line, then we need to allow that.
Got it. Thank you.
So you're saying there's no requirement on a separate meter? Doesn't have to have a separate meter?
There is a requirement that it has to be on a separate meter. That's a state requirement. But if it can be on the same line, then we have to allow that, as long as separate metering can be accomplished.
Okay.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak to this? And I see none. I'll bring it back to commission.
So are we just looking to have, to move to have a public hearing?
We already said that.
Or are we moving it to council?
This is the public hearing today.
Oh, this is the public hearing, okay, yeah.
So, yeah, we, our objective is to, you know, put it to a vote, either move it along or...
All right. So moved.
I just wanted to make a comment in that I don't necessarily agree with the increase of the number of allowed bedrooms. I think, especially given what we just talked about with parking, seems to be that, you know, sizes are going down. They say they have a lot of, it's common to have a lot of, you know, one-bedroom, one person. So I don't know that we necessarily need to increase the number of bedrooms to two for this.
Well, I think there was some discussion when we had this last fall that, say I was going to build a suite for my in-laws, that it'd still be nice to have an extra room, so they had a den or a study or a... It's not necessarily that that's going to be a bedroom, but it's going to be set up that way. But it'd be nice to have more space than just one room.
I remember that discussion. I just, I guess for me, I'm thinking with all of the other changes that were made by state law, to kind of really limit where, what we're able to do, I feel like holding back might be in our best interest.
With that in mind, is there a way to vote on what's required by the state and what the city council is proposing separately? Or do you want it as one vote, a single vote?
You could, you could do whatever you wish. If you want to make a motion to amend the recommendation for those aspects or separate them out, that would be fine. However, the commission would like to do it.
I'd say that we originally did send it to council with that one bedroom. That's what passed. And they said they were going to make it two-bedroom. So if we amend it again, they're going to change what we recommend, in my opinion.
So just to, to just go through that process so that there's an understanding. The commission can make whatever recommendation you think is best on, you know, you can separate things out, or you can vote on the whole package. If the commission recommends not to move forward with some aspect of it, then it takes a super majority of council to override that recommendation. So you can recommend, you know, it's really up to the commission. This is your recommendation to council, and then council can choose to, to vote and override whatever your recommendation is, or confirm your recommendation, whichever you wish to do.
Currently, we have a motion on the table. For it as-is.
As-is.
We don't have a second, but we...
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. So what, we can vote this, and if it doesn't pass, then another motion could be brought? Or does she need to bring her motion?
I just don't want it to seem like I'm not, I don't want to follow state law.
Right.
And so...
If there was no second.
If I vote no, then it's going to seem like I don't want to follow state law, which I do.
You can amend the motion, make a recommendation to amend the motion on the floor, if you wish.
Can I amend your motion?
Well, you can make a motion to rec, to amend.
Could I make a motion to amend and then, you know, move forward with two different motions, one, those required by state law?
So if you make a motion to amend, you need to get a second on that motion. And then you would, then you would make a vote on the amendment.
Okay.
And see how that goes.
Okay.
So I would make a motion to amend.
Okay.
I'll second.
And amend is just to change the...
His motion.
No, you're changing the bedroom.
But you have to state what your amendment is.
Oh, yeah, so what I would like to do is I would amend the motion so that we basically have two votes. One would be to approve all of those requirements for state law. The other would be to approve the motion, or to approve the requirements put forth by city council.
But you're just amending technicality, but you're just amending the one item of the entire motion, and that is to change the bedroom allowance to one.
True, yes.
That's it.
Yep, that's true.
Is that right?
Yeah, we can do that. That works.
That's what you were, request to keep it all the same, except for...
That works for me.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so you had the motion, and, and who's second?
I did.
Okay. I just want to keep it straight in the notes here.
Sorry for causing trouble.
Okay, so we would first vote on that, that amended motion.
Okay.
So, I'll take a roll call vote on that.
This is just on the amendment.
This, this is just on the amendment? The motion with your amendment included?
No, it's just on the amendment. We're voting on the amendment, right?
The amendment to it, to change it to just one bedroom, to keep it just one bedroom.
Yep.
Alberhaskey.
Aye.
Gribovich.
Aye.
Hartley.
Nay.
Henderson, oh, sorry, Johnson.
Nay.
Moser.
Aye.
Sorenson.
Nay.
Watkins.
Nay.
Okay, that motion fails. Okay? So, want to go back to the original?
Yep.
Motion?
We had a motion, and did we have a second on that?
Yeah. Sorenson and Watkins, right?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, need a roll call vote on that, please.
All right. Alberhaskey.
Aye.
Gribovich.
Aye.
Hartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Sorenson.
Aye.
Watkins.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries.
All right, thank you. There's no new business, no more agenda items. Is there any commission updates?
I don't have anything for you tonight.
All right, I would entertain a motion for...
So, moved.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all right, meeting is adjourned. Everyone have a great evening. Thank you.
You could have voted against it.
I know, but I don't want to see...